Paula, if you could start the recording.
Got it, and I'm making you a co-host.
Once we get done on logistics, we'll be off. All right, I'm going to mute everyone to start. And please join me for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on, we will go to a roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Siegel-Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Brea?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Finer?
Right.
And I assume I don't call Mr. Berry's name. He's resigned, yes?
Technically not yet, so he is not here, and we will address that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so as we discussed, Mr. Berry is not with us tonight, and that will bring us to our first order of business, which is to accept the letter of resignation submitted by Councilman Berry on July 25th. So do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Siegel-Morris, seconded by Ms. Thompson, to accept the resignation of Ryan Berry. Is there any discussion or questions from council? Any discussion or comments from the public? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries six to zero. And just a bit of housekeeping before we continue, we seem to be old pros at this by now, but this will trigger the process to essentially appoint a new member of council. We will follow very much the same model that we have done in the past. So at our next council meeting, which is on September 1st, we will, for the time being, we are planning to interview for the vacancy at that meeting. So the application period will open immediately. Any interested parties are asked to please submit the application and resume to our borough manager for interest in that position. We'll keep an eye on the applications as they roll in. If we receive a large number, we may need to schedule a special session for the interviews. But as of now, we are going to plan to handle that all on September 1st. Any other questions or concerns before we move on?
I have a question. How is that going to be done on Zoom? I assume it's going to be done on Zoom. And I remember last time we were sort of kept downstairs, and I just don't know how, if you've thought about that yet.
I haven't thought too much in detail about it. Certainly a fair question. You know, I think unless anybody has any other ideas, we might just need to proceed on in our system where, you know, if you're applying, you're asked not to watch the interviews that come before you. Other than that, you know, there's not.
Can we put the, um, people not being interviewed in a breakout room?
We could do that. Yeah, we could do that. So that might be a good approach here. All right, any other questions before we continue? Right, hearing none, we'll move on to community announcements. One thing I do just want to highlight here, which I know we will discuss later in the meeting, is that we, the borough was awarded additional grant money towards the North Main Street sidewalk. So I do just want to announce that, and as I mentioned, we will discuss that in a little bit more detail when we get to the engineers' portion of the meeting. Does any other member of council have anything they'd like to share as a community announcement?
The Social Equity Book Club that I was working on with Liz Young of Commonplace or the Common Reader, the first meeting will be September 10th. We're having another planning meeting tomorrow. And September 10th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. So you could probably get in touch with her to find out more information, and she's going to put it in one of her newsletters.
Excellent. Any other items we wish to have shared?
I received correspondence related to the Mary Yardley Bridge. I think it would make sense to discuss that during that part of the meeting, so I just wanted to put that footnote in.
And yeah, I also received correspondence regarding the the sidewalk outside of the Continental Tavern and accessibility for people with disabilities getting to their ramp there.
Let's, yeah, let's handle both of those then, under, I guess, probably both under engineers' report once we are covering those items. All right, moving on, next up on our agenda is public comment. So this is the portion of the meeting where members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on our agenda. If you wish to comment on an item that does appear on the agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that item. Members of the public are asked to please state their full name and address for the record. And of course, in our virtual setting, we will be making use of the raise hand feature in Zoom. I see that most of you know how to do that by now, but for those who may not, you can access that under the Participants tab if you're on the app. If you're calling in, you'll do so by pressing star nine. So Dr. Perlmutter, I saw yours first, so unmute yourself and go ahead.
Thank you. Dawn Perlmutter, 18 West College Avenue. I'm calling in reference to the calendar and notifications of meetings. I was just wondering if it's possible to put meetings on there at least two months ahead of time, because a lot is not being put on there, and I attempted to attend the HARP meeting two weeks ago. That was never published. It's not published right now for this week. There's, when things are published, they are put on there either two days ahead or the day before. And I think it would be very helpful if it was filled out and had the Zoom links. I mean, you can do that ahead of time. And also, if there was sort of more things posted that had to do with the things that are being discussed at the meetings. For example, the budget, it would be nice if the current budget and the proposed budget were posted on the website so that people could compare. Things like, you know, when you took out the loan, it was on there. I see there is another ordinance. It would just be nice if there was more communication, especially with the calendar, so that you could plan ahead of time.
Thank you. That is something we can definitely take a look at to make some of this information more available.
I will say that all the budget information that you could want is posted in the financial information tab of the website.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't realize that.
I just wanted, I agree that we should post it, especially that kind of an interesting time we are in, some people may be able to participate that couldn't before, or it's easier for people. So there's kind of a silver lining in this format. And I was wondering, Paula, is this something that is just a matter of posting it, or is there a challenge that, you know, that we can help with in terms of getting like all the sort of peripheral meetings up on there? Is it a matter of time, or is it like a technical issue?
No, I just do it usually the week before or the week of when I create the Zoom link, and then I add it all together. So I'll spend the time and go through and put every meeting on there over the next week or so.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I'd like to report that the Yardley, The Way We Were signage project has been a great success, both for experienced Yardley and for the Yardley Historical Association. It was extended through the end of this week to comply, coincide with Yardley Restaurant Week. And probably the truest indicator of the fact that it was a good thing is that Lambertville, New Jersey has copied it. So they're doing their own very similar signage project.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on to consideration of the consent agenda. There are five items on today's consent agenda. They are approval of minutes from the last meeting, of course, the bills list. There is a certificate of appropriateness for the Little Library, special event permit, and as well as the farmer's market extension for Buttonwood Park. Is there any member of council that would like to have one of these items considered separate? All right, hearing none, is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Question was made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Ross for approval of today's consent agenda. Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? And I see Dr. Perlmutter.
I just had a few questions about the Music Together classes. Is that a one-time event permit, or is it continual? I'm just a little concerned because I'm not sure if that's a for-profit business that's using the park as their venue, or if the classes are free. Because I just wouldn't want to set a precedent where one business has the opportunity to use a public space, and then we get into all kinds of liability issues also in terms of, since there's children involved, you know, if it's a business and if it's every week, and if it's not free, then it just opens up a lot of questions of are other businesses allowed to operate out of the park, or do we have a contract with them? So I was just curious about that.
It was only two days, and they provided insurance. And one day already passed, so it's only one day.
Is it paid or free?
It's free.
Oh, okay. Just curious. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments, I will call the question on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries six to zero. Stuff, Chief Kelly, report.
All right, sorry, just had to unmute. I have monthly service statistics for July 2020. In July, the police department handled 742 calls for service. One parking ticket was issued, 90 moving traffic citations were issued, two non-traffic criminal citations were issued. We investigated five motor vehicle accidents and made five arrests, none of which were DUI. That's the end of my reports.
Thank you. Any members of council have questions for the chief? All right, and from the public, Dr. Perlmutter?
Yes, I was just curious if the analysis was done with the auxiliary police, the comparison for the cost? If that was done, if the insurance was looked into, and if that's going to be made public?
Great, chief. I believe we did look at the insurance question, yes?
We did, and our broker told us that this year there would be no adjustment to our policy. And next year, he said they may, this is a quote, "They may get adjusted slightly on both police professional employment practices," but he doesn't see any significant increase to either policy.
Right, and as far as budget, you know, budget is still in formation, but as I know we were discussing in general government, we're not looking at substantial increases as a result. Right?
I apologize, I did have a question. I was, but just to the chief, I was wondering if you've noticed, or anyone else, an increase in truck traffic heading south from from the north part of town, heading south through Main Street, especially in the middle of the night at a high speed. I don't know if it's like a GPS, they all use the same GPS, so maybe the GPS truckers are using is sending them that way? Because it's not a toll, it used to be a toll evasion idea, but that's not an issue anymore.
I suspect some of that may be related, sir, to the Scudder Falls Bridge project, which has been paving the last couple of weeks overnight, so that the trucks may be related to deliveries of materials there.
Oh, you think they're actually part, I was thinking that they're going through town, but not part of, you think they're actually part of the project?
If it's strictly overnight, that's what my thought would be, because we have, I haven't seen an increase in truck traffic during the day since that became toll.
Right, exactly. It's only at night. Yeah, okay.
And there's been people in the flash over social media that have been complaining about a noise coming from, and people have confirmed that's coming from that paving project on midnight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. Moving on, next is our engineers' report.
Hi there, can everyone hear me? Awesome. Because we missed the last meeting, should I start with those updates? Or just go right into what's from the most current one?
Let's, I guess we could just go with what's current, unless there's something from last time that we need to have context for today, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll think about that. I don't think so. I think everything's kind of straightforward, not too many things changed. So with regards to the general updates, there's really nothing new to report outside of what was in the engineers' report that you all received, unless anybody needs some clarification on things. I think the only thing that had some movement was the Buck Creek Watershed Management Plan. We are at a point where we would like to move forward with getting everything installed, but unfortunately, things have lagged a bit in getting ASA reimbursed through the grant. The grant coordinator that I was working with, I think he was on vacation, so we're trying to push that forward, but they're in a spot where like they are not ready to move forward with the next phase until they get their first invoice paid. So if things go quickly the rest of this month, I think we'll be okay. But if not, we may need to consider paying their initial invoice and getting reimbursed ourselves through the grant, and then figuring out a system for this going forward that works better, so that we don't stall on time and things like that. But otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same with regards to the general updates.
All right, understood. Before we continue, I just see a raised hand from Mr. Thorn.
Yep, thank you. Alex Thorn, 100 North Main. Is there a separate part where you'll talk about the sidewalk? Or is that covered?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so seeing no others, let's continue.
All righty, moving on to projects. So the first one is Main and Appton intersection. So as everyone knows, pretty much everything has been installed. We got PennDOT approval with regards to updating the permit plan to include the advanced pedestrian phase. I don't think that is quite live yet. I know that that was dependent on them installing the final version of the pedestrian push buttons, but I know that that is happening this week. So pretty soon, that whole intersection will be wrapped up and finalized. I did receive the complaint from Kim that there might be a concern in regards to ADA accessibility from the one sidewalk ramp to the ramp that takes you into the Continental Tavern. Those ramps were put in during PennDOT's project to pave Main Street, so they are not actually associated with our current project, so they are not the responsibility of the contractor that's currently out there. So we do have to loop PennDOT back in. So I will reach out to them and ask them to perform an inspection to confirm that they are still within ADA compliance, and then we can go from there. If they are within compliance, that kind of limits what we can do, since it is a PennDOT intersection. But we might be able to have a conversation with them about something that could be done to maybe make it safer. I don't know, but we'll have to investigate that further. But we are looking into it, and we'll do what we can to address that concern. Otherwise, now that we have that updated permit plan, we are adjusting the change of scope to now include that, and you guys should expect that to be accompanying the next engineers' report before the first meeting in September. And then we'll get all of those scope changes approved, and then hopefully working towards closing that project out, which is exciting. Yeah, any questions on Main and Appton before I move on?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Cool. Mary Yardley Bridge. We're still kind of in a weird standstill with that. We've been pushing forward with the GP11 and getting that all filled out, but we still need to have confirmation from DCNR that it's not going to be an issue that our grading plan goes outside of the existing easement. I don't expect it to really be a problem. We're still not touching the existing trail. We're just kind of, you know, tying the new elevation of the finalized bridge into the existing grade and kind of leveling out that mound a bit. So I can't imagine they're going to have a problem with it, but we do need their feedback when we submit the permit, so working through that. But otherwise, things are moving along with that. I haven't gotten a recent update on the fundraising aspect, but we're, we're doing what we need to to get our permits. Any questions on that?
I think, is this a good moment for me to relate to the, to bring in the correspondence I receiveds?
Cool.
So this was a letter from John Salantano, who many of you know, he's been active in fundraising for the Mary Yardley Bridge.
Yep.
So the letter says, "As we are fundraising and need to answer questions of donors, it would be helpful to have some information. One, what are the major milestones with dates that will show progress toward a new bridge opening? Two, are there any changes in cost estimates, et cetera? And three, could we get a brief update every other week on progress against the main milestones to be outlined as above?" And I also had a conversation with him to clarify some of these items, or all of these items. And I guess there are two really main parts of it. One is the question about cost estimates, and are there any changes with that? So why don't we address that first, then I'll go to the second issue?
At this point, I haven't seen an updated cost estimate from the last one that we provided to you guys. And until we get the okay from DCNR about our anticipated grading, it doesn't make sense to update it. But we can certainly try and refocus on that to give that. But the, the costs that were last given, I know were like the worst-case scenario, so that would include whatever grading we have going on right now. And if DCNR says that we need to limit it, then the cost of grading will go down, because we'll have to keep it within the easement, so.
So I think the issue there is just that the, because of the, you know, not good timing with the COVID thing happening at the same time as trying to fundraise for this, it's made it more challenging. And any kind of, you know, I guess if keeping John and the people who are involved in that project in the loop on, as costs get, as we get a narrower view on the costs, I just want to make sure that they're kept, all of us, but especially that group is kept in the loop, so that they are aware of what their, you know, shortfall is for their, because they're going to kick off the fundraising and, you know, do whatever they can to make it happen.
Gotcha. Well, I could probably, when I send out the engineers' report, make sure to also send out like a little blurb email to John and everybody that's on the bridge committee chain with a little bit more detail. I could start doing that, I can certainly.
I think that would be great. And along those lines, the other question he has about milestones and dates that show progress, the kind of thing he'd want to sort of present to a donor. Here are the milestones, here's where we are, here are the costs, and this is the, this is the next part we're doing. You know, this is, it reminds me of a conversation I had that I brought into council several years ago with Tom Beach, where we would get these updates on council, and there are committees who are directly involved, so they're obviously aware of all the details. But for the rest of us, you know, we all have things that, we're all pretty busy. And, you know, it would be so helpful, I imagine you guys are using project planning software to keep track of these things, and so you have milestones, and then you have, you know, dates. And even if you're waiting on PennDOT, you probably have a target date when you expect to hear from them, and obviously those things change. Is there a way that, without creating extra work, just to kind of make it easy for everyone, but to create more visibility for this project and other projects? We could just get that, your project plan with the milestones and dates, so we just know where we are?
Um, potentially.
Or, you know, whatever you guys are using.
Yeah, I know that, so we use a program called Dell Tech. That's where we put our projects into, and there is like a scheduled component to that. How detailed and up-to-date that is can differ depending on the individual project managers. But I could certainly work towards including, so the projects that we identify as key projects that get their own topic in the agenda, like we could try to make sure that those particular ones have updated charts like that and append it to the engineers' report, if that is something that people would appreciate and would add more transparency. Like, we could certainly work towards that for sure, and I can speak to the individual project managers for these projects and, and inform them that they need to be updating them ahead of when I need to send the report and include that, sure.
I mean, that would be, yeah, again, I don't want to create, you know, more work for people, but I'm imagining whatever you use.
We, we have to update those for, well, meetings, but whether or not that's in line with when I have to give you guys a report.
I see what you're saying.
I doubt it is right now, but
I see what you're saying.
I can give that directive for sure.
Even if it wasn't, or even if it was once a month, you know, for, for people who are not like following all of it, it would be so helpful, because you could just look, because we will get an update that says like, you know, DEP approved, moving forward with GP11, grading plan finalized, you know, need DCNR, but, you know, from that, you can't tell, is that six months or is that a week? You know what I mean?
Right, right.
And if you have that to refer to, even if it was monthly, you're not the most up-to-date, you could put a disclaimer on it. You know, it would be so helpful, and I think it'd be good for you, it'd be good for council, it'd be good for the public. Nobody loses from just making that information available.
No, certainly not. I agree. Additionally, is there something else that would be helpful for the committee to have when they're trying to work with donors? Like, do they want some sort of like a brochure handout type thing? Like, is that what he's also sort of getting at?
I, you know, from what I know about him, he's very active in nonprofits, and I trust he knows what he's doing, and he'll ask for what he needs. So I, my sense is, this is what he's asking for. And, and it, you know, it resonates with me, because I've asked for the same thing way before you were involved with, with the company. And I think it's just, it's good for everyone to know where things are at, you know? So I just, I took that as an opportunity to kind of blow it up into a more general thing that might be something that could help in a lot of areas. So for now, all I'm aware of is changes in costs, you know, keeping them in the loop certainly, and this idea of like milestones and where we are in the project.
Yeah, and milestones with a timeline. That's understandable. Yeah, no, I will work to make sure that that gets included now with, with the engineers' report for the key projects that we have going on.
All right, that's great. Thank you very much.
I see two public comments. We'll start with Ms. Taylor. We need to unmute. Hold on.
Still muted.
Here we go. In regard to the fundraising campaign that is actively underway, you can send a check, you can go online. you can send a check, you can go online. And um, in my opinion, it's going very well. Which um leads to, now you have members of the public looking at the project. They have invested generously. And they will want to see this project move forward. I don't think we can lose sight of the fact that in the overall scope of things, this is a small project. And when it gets very much extended out over time, the credibility of the project diminishes. So, um, but thank you all who have already contributed to the project. And Pennsylvania American Water Company has already contributed as a corporate entity, which is great. And I think I can probably go out on a limb and say that I'm quite comfortable in saying that the $35,000 to meet the match will be achieved by September 14th, which is great.
That's great news. That's very exciting. Awesome.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, and I see another public comment here from Mr. Thorn.
Just a question, so she may have answered it just then. Um, the estimate, so the $35,000 match, is that to make, to cover the total cost of 70? Seems very low uh compared to what I thought I heard before. But I guess my question is, what's the total cost of the project? How much is the borough contributing? And how much is really intended to be covered by donations?
I'm definitely gonna have to look up some things to give you those exact numbers. But the 70,000 was, I guess, the deficit that was needed to be raised. The overall project cost is 200,000 something. Um, Susan, do you remember off the top of your head? I have to bring it up, and I don't want to misspeak here. See.
I think your best case scenario was around 211,000.
Yeah, that's the most recent.
Best case.
So the bur- yeah. The borough is putting up 70. We have a $35,000 match on public contributions from a community member. Um, Susan just reported they think they will meet that 35,000, so that's Borough 70, another 70, and then the grant we received was 35, correct?
40.
Forty, 40,000.
Yep.
Okay, so that still has a short, yes?
Correct.
Okay, 70 plus 70 plus 40 is only 180 on a 211 number, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, don't see any further public comment on this topic, so I think we're good to move on to our next.
All right, and the next one is ongoing negotiations with the Pico property. Um, I talked with Paula earlier today. Um, we're still kind of waiting to hear back from Pico. The one guy is on vacation, so we're still, still trying to um push that through. But at this point, um, I'm just going to update the budget based off of the appraisal we got and just get our ducks in a row with the grant people because I, I don't want to jeopardize us not being considered. Um, so we were, we were doing our best to hold out to get the information from Pico, to make it a stronger application to show that, you know, we, we have negotiations underway. But at this point, I, I don't wanna risk holding out too long and then our application just gets, you know, pushed to the end of the pile and not considered. So, um, I'm gonna get that submitted before the next council meeting. And then, once we get information from Pico, we, we can always send it in. But um, they're supposed to be making their decisions on these grants um this fall. So we need to get the rest of the data in there. So, that's where that stands. Um, does anybody have any questions about that one?
I don't see any there.
All right, and then the last key project is the North Main sidewalk. So as you announced earlier, uh, we got good news. Um, the PA Sewer and Small Water, they ended up meeting yesterday instead of next month. And uh, we were awarded what we were asked for, so that is super exciting. Um, but it's definitely worth mentioning that when we applied for that grant, um, we put it in for only up to Cold Springs because that was what we had the HOP for initially, and that's what we were ready to do. Um, so this particular grant only covers up to that point in regards to the drainage and for the traffic control, and that's about it. So we still wouldn't need to make up another 176K to do the rest of the sidewalk up to Cold Springs. And then we have a lot to make up to get all the way out to the easement. But in being awarded this and um getting prepared to uh apply for the DCD MTF grant at the end of September, all the way out to the easement, uh, and then the fact that we are closing out our MTF PennDOT grant and then can reapply next year, I think we're in really good shape to secure funding to get all the way out to the easement and then continue working towards all the way out to Dolington Road, which was the initial goal when this all started a very long time ago. So what I need from all of you tonight is to get final approval on the proposal that we submitted at the end of July to do the design all the way out to the easement and secure the HOP. So that as we secure funding for construction, we have all of our ducks in a row to do that.
I can make a motion for that.
Sorry.
Oh, do you wanna say the amount for the, for the motion?
Uh.
I know the amount. It's 89,215 dollars.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll move to approve the design work in the amount of 89,215 dollars for the North Main sidewalk project.
Second.
All right, that motion was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Do we have any discussion or questions from members of council?
Yeah, Liz, can you mention the, the, how much the grant was awarded for? Because I don't know if I caught that.
Um, yeah, let me.
211,000 and change?
Yeah, like an 899 or something like that. Um, I can get you the exact number, John.
No, it's fine. Yeah, I mean, I know you had mentioned earlier at the, the committee meeting, but I thought it was just important.
It is 212,000, 211, 212,000, somewhere right around there.
211,989 dollars.
There you go. Thank you, Caroline. Yeah, so that, um, that has a 15% match. So that's about $37,000 that the borough would have to prepare. Um, the DCD grant um that we already received for 100,000, uh, that doesn't have a match. And then the one that we're reapplying for at the end of September, again, doesn't have a match, which is part of the reason why we are actively pursuing all of that.
And the, real quick, the one in September, Liz, when would that, um, when would we have an answer for that one?
Um, when did we hear back last year? I wanna say we heard around February, so I would expect it to be similar. But a lot of stuff has been sliding lately with everything that's going on. But I can, um, I can certainly double check that. Because the thing is, is that that grant is usually due at the end of July. And they gave an extension to have it due at the end of September. So I don't know if that February date would stand with a September deadline. I have no idea what their plans are in regards to when they'll be sitting down to make the decision. Um, but when I go to submit it, I can certainly ask to see if anybody on their end has, has an idea. Um, but with seeing success with the PA Sewer and Small Water, so this was the first year that they allowed people to bifurcate projects where you just kind of pull out the drainage portion of your project to utilize this funding. Um, and we have received direction that they're gonna continue allowing that. So I think we should definitely prepare to apply again next year for the rest of the drainage in regards to this project to continue making it more affordable.
Great. Thanks. Um, all right, so we do have a motion on the table for approval of design work, uh, the amount of 89,215 dollars. So we have any final, uh, from council, final questions, comments on that? And then I do see one from the public, Mr. Thorn.
Uh, not on the design. I guess if, if we think about that, the 89,000 would come out of the 211, 989.
It would come out of the 100,000 we've already received from the DCD.
100,000, okay. Okay, um, yeah, or if we're gonna keep talking about it, I'll stop asking questions about design. You can finish your vote and then we can, I can ask more questions around the sidewalk itself.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's do that. Let's move past this motion and then we can come back to general questions on it.
David, can I just chime in? I thought Matt made a great point at the earlier meeting. Some of this work is redesigned, um, especially the right of way was a big issue previously. So this work kind of takes that out because most of the residents didn't want it going 10 to 12 feet into their yards. So, um, that's one of the reasons why a lot of redesign happened. So, um, just wanted to add that in.
Yes, that is a good point. I know that a couple of years ago, that was a point of contention. Uh, so for clarity, right, we are at 33 feet. That is it. Yes.
Uh, so, this is Alex Thorn again, sorry. So for clarity, 33 feet, what does that reference?
Uh, there's a right of way um for PennDOT, and there's a 33 feet, which is the standard, which would be where the sidewalk on North Main Street was going now. There's a separate right of way issue that goes when you go outside of town. That could go either way depending on your interpretation of it. And the previous design work was going to the longer distance. I'm not sure what it was, if it was 50 or somewhere longer where the sidewalk would end up in the middle of residences' front lawn.
Understood. So the 33 feet is what I'm at, so very helpful, I appreciate that. So the 33 feet is measured from where to where?
From the center of, of the, um.
Road.
From the center of the road over, um, but there's a little more calculations in it. It's kind of, it's kind of confusing, to be honest with you, because it references like, um, like cattle paths and things in the, uh, in the physical right of way.
Yeah, it goes back to the original deeds and stuff, so some of it is, is definitely a little wonky. But, so the original design was trying to save money by having the sidewalk have a buffer where we didn't have to include curbing. And so when it became apparent that cutting into people's yards was not the ideal and jogging it back out towards the road, we then had the requirement of including curbing, which increased the cost. Um, but was, was the right move, I think, in the end for, you know, usability and aesthetics.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, all right, let's, uh, well, I see Ms. Taylor.
So, um, the current proposal includes curbing?
Correct.
That also entails storm drainage?
Correct.
This proposal that they're approving right now is for the design of all that, not the construction, to be clear.
Right, um. As we discussed earlier in the committee meeting, I would strongly encourage strict scrutiny of PennDOT standards regarding the storm drainage. And something like AFT did not turn out well because of PennDOT standards and curbing and storm drainage and can be very disruptive. So, I urge you to be very, very watchful.
Thank you. Uh, any final comments strictly on this piece, the approval of the design?
All right, hearing that, I'm gonna. I do have one, one question here, and this is not to open a can of worms, but just because I just, just something just occurred to me because we used to, we were gonna not do, we weren't gonna have the curb, but now that we're gonna do the curb and the drainage, if we wanted to just have conduit in there for future electrical wire, um, is that just a matter of throwing conduit in, or is that like a whole thing?
That's a good question. I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, so I, I can certainly look into that. But I can't imagine that it's a whole lot of extra work. I mean, if you're already gonna be trenching and doing all that sort of stuff, like, it really shouldn't be that, that big of a deal. Um, it would require more coordination with the design and figuring out what is already out there with regards to subsurface communications and things. Like, I know that there are some in Yardley, but I don't know that off the top of my head, but we can look into that.
Yeah, I think that would be useful as well. I mean, the whole concept, maybe, you know, Google Fiber, right? They've done that in a lot of, you know, planned communities. This is, might be an opportunity to, to bring something like that and get some potentially outside funding for the fact that they'd have opportunity in the future to have clients wired up.
Yeah.
I don't know how it works, and there's the fiber, there's also electrical, but we have all these poles and we have trees that come down on a regular basis, as we all know. As we've got a recent reminder of, the ground's gonna be open and we're putting in the drain pipe. It just seems like we should at least look at what, and, and this, this project can go on forever. And I, I don't wanna do that, but at the same time, at least find out what's involved in getting the conduit so we can do something in the future.
Yeah, I can um certainly talk to the infrastructure group tomorrow when I let them know that we're good to move forward with design overall and see what that looks like um and the feasibility of it. Because I agree with you, if you're opening up the road, you might as well. Okay.
Like getting a surgery while you're in there, you might as well do a few more things.
Mm-hmm.
A delightful metaphor. Um, all right, let's, uh, let's call a question on this. Again, this is approval of the design phase and the amount of 89,215 dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, hearing none, that motion carries six to zero. Uh, and then do we have additional updates on the sidewalk?
Um, no, there, I don't think there's really anything additional to that. We're, I'm just gonna go full steam ahead on the, on the design now and, and get ready for that um, grant application at the next council meeting or the following one, you guys will have a resolution in front of you to, to go along with it. Um, but otherwise, there's really not much else in the, in the near future. Um, so at this point, I think all that's next for me to talk about is just the ongoing grant funding opportunities.
We do. I know that Mr. Thorn had a more general question about the sidewalk, so let's, let's uh do that now.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate your patience with me. Um, so, and you may not know these numbers off the top of your head, but trying to get a sense of where we ran sidewalks from Afton out to Curtains' property, which I think is like 88 North Main. Just trying to get a, a appreciation for what the cost was there versus from Curtains now out to Cold Spring. I think you probably have a more current view of that because that's probably on a, an estimate sheet that you've been looking at.
Yeah, so from, to go from Wayfaring out to Cold Springs, the current estimate that covers everything, like all of it, is like 425. And then to go all the way out to the easement at around 136 North Main Street was just shy of 800. Uh, with regards to what it costs to get from Afton out there, that I definitely am not familiar with off the top of my head because that was a project prior to my involvement with Yardley. Um, but I could probably dig it up if I had some time, so maybe as the rest of the meeting goes on, I can circle back.
I believe it was just, oh, go ahead, Matt.
I think it was around, and uh, it could be plus or minus 10 or 15%, but I think it was around like 570, 575.
That's reasonable to me based off of the linear footage and what we have going on to get out to, to Cold Springs versus the easement. So I don't, I don't doubt that, but I can definitely look what it actually was.
It was a more expensive portion, though. There was more design and work involved. So that's why it was a little portion for more money than what we're doing next.
Yeah, and from my conversations with Tom, I do know that, um, as we get further along, there, we won't have as much drainage work that we'll have to include along the road because it will already have been taken care of. Um, but, yeah. In general.
All right, that's helpful. So, so 425 was the estimate from. Right, that's helpful. So, so four twenty-five was the estimate from where it is today to Cold Springs, and then another eight hundred from Cold Springs out to Dolington? You keep saying like.
No, out to, out to the easement at one thirty-six North Main Street. So it, it would be an additional four hundred, because they're actually, they're, they're very close in linear footage to get to Cold Springs and then from Cold Springs to one thirty-six north, there is pretty much the same distance.
Okay. So cold from, or I'm sorry, so from one thirty-six North Main to Dolington, do we have that?
No, we have not priced that out, no.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. The two twelve-ish that we just got granted, the fifteen percent match has to come out of the borough budget. Is that something that we have in twenty-twenty-one already set aside?
There is a sidewalk fund, and I believe that it is gonna, that it covers all of that, but Paula can speak more directly, or Caroline.
Yes, we have some money put aside to complete the next phase. We also just took out a line of credit, and we do expect that we will be using that to help move this project forward. Using that.
Okay, so that gives you two forty-ish, once you match the two twelve plus the fifteen percent. What is that worth? So is that, is that something where we hold the two forty and the grant doesn't expire until we get additional grant funding to get to the four twenty-five? What, how do you anticipate sort of the move forward from what we, what we have today or what we've been granted today to?
So right now, what Borough just approved was for us to do the design work and to get the HOP permit from PennDOT all the way out to the easement. So once we have that, we will have the ability to construct all the way out to the easement. It'll just be a matter of securing funding to do the construction side of it. So at this point in time, with the, uh, what we just received in the PA store in Smallwater, we're, we're very close to having what we need to get through construction out to Cold Springs. So there's the potential that we could phase this out construction-wise. We could do alternate bids when we put it out there, and then we would just have to make sure that we continue to renew and keep the HOP current as we, you know, do our best to continue going after grant funding and slowly whittle down this, this cost. But I would say based off of what's in the existing sidewalk fund and potentially utilizing the line of credit, you're gonna at least see work going to Cold Springs in the next year and hopefully all the way out to the easement. I think that's everybody's goal.
All right, thank you for your patience with me. I appreciate all the info.
I am muted. Let's try that again. All right, thank you. So Liz, does that conclude? Engineer, we have any other items from you tonight?
The only, the last thing is just to talk about the, um, the RCP grant. So, um, on July first, when PA Congress had one of their meetings, they created a line item for Yardley Borough for five million dollars that can be used for community and economic development projects for, over the next ten years that we can draw down from. So the way that that works is so if you are not on that itemization list, you don't even have access to this particular pool of funding. We are now on that list, up to five million dollars, so we now have access, which is wonderful. But then from that, you have to apply. There's an application. This year, they were due August twelfth, so we unfortunately missed that, but that's not the end of the world. You probably should have a pretty good idea of what you want to apply for, because there's a fifty percent match associated with this grant funding. So it does require some planning, and after you go through the application process, if they deem your projects to be in line with the mission of the RACP grants, which is all about revitalization, you then kind of go into a more rigorous process where you have to put together a business plan and prove that you have the fifty percent match and all this sort of stuff. But this is a hundred percent a way for Yardley to be able to finance redoing Borough Hall and a handful of other projects that, that we have ideas for. So I think it's pretty great that we were able to get on that list, and that can only be done by representatives. So whoever talked to them, good job. That's exciting.
All right, thank you. We'll certainly be folding that into our long-term planning, because that is a significant source of funding that could change some of the math for us. So we have some time, but we won't forget it. All right, I think that concludes there. So moving on to Manager Johnson's report.
Besides my report that I already submitted to you, we are knee-deep in getting our twenty-twenty-one budget going, so I have the budget calendar that needs to be adopted by you guys, if you so feel it is okay. And that is all I have.
All right, we hear a motion on the adoption of the budget calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All right, that motion was made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Siegel Morris. Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? And hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? But hearing none, the motion carries six to zero.
And then I have just one more thing. We have a zoning hearing board meeting coming up August twenty-fourth, where there is a new application that involves the floodplain. So I was wondering if council would like legal representation to attend again.
I would think that that's probably a good idea.
All right, do we get a motion to that effect?
Sure. Um, I move that Yardley Borough has a legal representative at the zoning hearing board meeting.
To oppose, do you want to say that?
What?
I think we have to specify in the motion what we want the legal representative stance to be on the application.
To, yes, sorry, to oppose any sort of development in the floodplain.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilperson Ross, seconded by Councilperson Thompson. You know, I'll just comment, this is consistent with practice that council has held regarding these sorts of applications in the floodplain. So we're just trying to be consistent there. Are there any additional questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Ghadadi.
Good evening. Peter Ghadadi, forty-four South Bell Avenue. Can we just ensure and verify that there will be ample spacing for public to attend this meeting from gavel to gavel?
Unfortunately, with the social distancing, as you know, it's very limited. Whenever we can get you in there, I know Wes was able to get you in there, but it's, it's tight.
Well, I was present for a portion of the meeting and then I was required to leave. I'm just concerned that we don't put ourselves in a position where this COVID virus creates an issue for the sunshine law. So we have a public meeting. The public has to be present or should be present, and if we need to make provisions, we need to make provisions, not only for this, but for, for all public meetings, as you're doing here with this, this presentation tonight. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Mr. Forrester, I see you've got your hand raised.
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that the previous zoning hearing board meeting was broadcast live as this meeting is being done, and I can only assume it will be done again next week. So it is, there is opportunity for the residents to witness what goes on.
Witnessing is not the same as participating. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Promater, I see your hand.
Yes, I have a question. Is there any way it can be a combination? I know it's a hearing and it has to be done at the, um, at the hall, but isn't there a way that instead of it being videotaped, that a Zoom meeting could be set up? That, um, where people can participate and you don't have to worry about the social distancing?
We can take a look at it. I don't want to make promises tonight, because I know we have to make sure that all of the tech actually works, but I think that's certainly something we can look at to see if we can find a hybrid solution, at least in regards to public participation. I think our parties, right, they certainly have a need to be in the room. So we can take a look at that, and I see Caroline, yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely take questions, and then whoever is at the computer can relay those questions, but in order for the zoning hearing board members to participate in a Zoom meeting, they would all need to be headsetted into the meeting or have their own laptop. Otherwise, they're not going to be able to hear what the online participants are saying, and we just don't have five laptops and headsets for them or the network capabilities for that on short notice. So I think the best option here would be if someone wants to participate online, they can ask questions, and whoever's at the computer can relay those questions. I don't think you could probably be a party to the case in that format, though, but that, that's a question for Bucky.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the motion on the floor is for the Borough to be represented in opposition to the zoning hearing board application on August twenty-fourth. I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, that also carries six to zero. Right, and I believe Paula, that concludes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We will then turn it over to Mr. Klosser for a solicitor's report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of items tonight. One, there's been mention of the line of credit. Now, we have submitted the application to the state for approval of that. I expect to hear from the department within the next week or so, so I'm hoping that we can close on that alone by the end of the month or first of September relatively soon. So that's where that stands. Secondly, we have been asked to, the Borough's been asked to essentially re-adopt your two pension plans, one for the police, one for the non-uniform participants. So there are separate ordinances to accomplish that. It's my understanding that even though you're re-adopting the plans, there really have been no significant or material changes to the plans themselves, but that this is a sort of a routine re-adoption process that essentially updates the plans by date, if not by substance. So we would ask council tonight to authorize us to advertise those two ordinances so that we can accomplish that.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, not all at once there. The motion is made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Ross to advertise an ordinance for the uniform pension plan as well as an ordinance for the non-uniform pension plan. Is there any discussion from council? Discussion from the public, I see Dr. Promater.
Thank you. Um, can we make sure that this ordinance is actually posted before it's voted on? Just, and maybe the one that was in effect before, just so that we can make sure there haven't been any changes, and I actually am not familiar with the original one, so I would like to see it before it gets voted on.
Uh, yes, we can make the documents available. They're all part of public record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries six to zero.
Sorry, I didn't catch.
Siri is talking to me. Mr. Klosser, anything else tonight?
No, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on, Mayor Harding. You're muted.
There you go. Better? All right, so I just want to, real quick, to thank Tony Napoli and David Applebaum, who came on to the radio show today and spent some good time talking about all the things going on, a lot of things going on in the Borough, and then also welcome a great new sponsor of Yardley Pharmacy. So that's it, just update on the radio show.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to council member reports, and we will begin tonight with Mr. Ross.
All right, hello, everybody. I think my council report pretty much got covered in the very extensive report that Liz made. So I think that covers it. We're gonna be working on the sidewalk and the bridge, and we're gonna try to get everything squared away as much as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Siegel Morris.
Nothing to report. Sorry, I was muted.
Thank you. Susan, I see you there. We'll go through reports and I'll come back at the end, if that's all right. All right, for myself, nothing additional to report tonight, other than that in the interim, until we appoint a new council member, I will take over as the liaison for the Environmental Advisory Commission, so I will get in touch with them to let them know. I will fill in the gap. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you. I, general government met this evening. We discussed the budget. We're coming up on the end of the third quarter, which was the date we set for reassessing where we are, given the reductions in revenue from COVID-nineteen. We are still projecting we're going to run a deficit. Back in April, we projected it would be about seventy thousand. It's hard to tell now since our revenue streams are picking up, but we are expecting somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand at this point, but we'll continue to keep you apprised of our analysis and come back with updated recommendations when we have the end of quarter numbers. Reading Avenue Committee met last night. They are, given the the lack, the decision not to go forward with the grant at the last meeting, they are looking for professional input from an arborist on overall design ideas and also what trees can be kept and what trees should be gotten rid of. And they're also looking for more volunteer and community support, so there's going to be a tour in the upcoming months of the property to try to garner support. So we'll be pushing that on social media, so I just ask all of you to help spread the word on that. John or Brian, do you want to add anything there that I missed? Okay. And then Parks and Rec also met since the last meeting. I think I had already reported that the races had been canceled, so they're just trying to figure out other recreational activities that are COVID-friendly. They are piloting a cornhole league right now in Buttonwood Park, so if anyone's interested, send an email to me and I'll get you in contact. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCann.
I'll just continue to mention and thank everyone for the fundraising efforts for the Mary Yardley Bridge, something that, you know, right now as committee, we struggle with, and I know Alex had mentioned, you know, the shortfall that, you know, our goal is to get up to that thirty-five, if we get fundraised more, that would be fantastic. Obviously, these are unprecedented times. Asking people for money is tough, but we're out there and people have been very generous. We hope to continue these fundraising efforts. So please be aware, signs are out there, and we're gonna get that information out to the community. So that's it for mine. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Finer.
The Community Outreach Committee did not meet last week, or last meeting due to the power outage, so nothing to report.
Thank you, and now we will circle back. Ms. Taylor, I see you have a question.
Yes, while we were installing the Way We Were signs, it became quite evident that there are a lot of things in downtown Yardley, public amenities that are looking pretty shabby. Trash cans with no lids, trash cans with slats missing, nearly all of the decorative street light posts need repainting, at least at the bottom. So these are relative. So these are relatively minor and can be handled in a variety of ways, but, um, something that can make the borough look much more presentable. And, um, I think we should be tackling these small things because you wouldn't look good. You would attract visitors and visitors should be impressed once they're here.
David, if I can speak about that, I actually just spoke to Ken Smith about the lights yesterday and we were looking at them and we decided to wait until spring since the winter is, believe it or not, gonna fastly approach and then the salt will destroy any new paint that's put on them. So we were gonna wait till spring and then that's gonna be a spring project.
Hopefully, one, uh, winter of salt doesn't take off all the paint.
All right, sounds good there. Um, all right, that concludes our council member reports. Before we move on to our last item of business, I'll just give an opportunity. If any member of council wants to raise a business item that really didn't elsewhere fit here, discussion items is the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, David, I just wanted to mention, um, it's personally happened to me anyway, but, um, I've noticed with Yuri that the truck traffic is increasing. My house, uh, basically, uh, an oversized truck hit the cable line, pulled the line right through the side of my house. I have a big hole in the side of my house. Um, and that line's been out forever, you know, there wasn't. So it's an issue for me, but it's something I think we can maybe look at because I do think there's a character of the town, especially as we're creating these sidewalks, that, that could potentially be a danger and I don't know if there's a way to restrict more truck traffic, especially the oversized truck that happened to damage my house. So, um, it's an issue I'm certainly, you know, interested in looking into more.
Got you. Thanks, John. Um, you know, in terms of, you know, aside from the incident which happened here, which does not sound good, sorry to hear that. You know, I think the general approach to truck traffic, you know, something that is gonna be best handled through Rep. Warren's office or Senator Sanzera's office. Um, you know, I know that we've done the PENDAT study before, which really did not yield much in our favor. But, you know, it's always worth, I think, continuing to speak to the representatives at the state level about that issue. So I would definitely, uh, recommend getting in touch with them. I know state legislators are gonna have far more ability to work with PENDAT on something like this than we are. All right, do we have any other discussion items before we move on to our final business? All right, hearing none, then other business is one more extension of the outdoor dining.
I'd like to propose that we break from our tradition on this one and extend it a little longer than a month. I just, nothing's going to change. Um, they're still at 25% capacity indoors. So I was wondering if we could just project this out to the end of the warm weather, perhaps the end of October. If no one has any, I guess if you, if you don't like that, you can vote the motion down. So I'm gonna make a motion to, um, loosen our parking ordinances and also extend our permit. Discount for restaurants using tents outdoors until October 31st, 2020.
Second.
All right, that motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Are there any, uh, discuss, is there any discussion from council?
Well, just, just a thought, not to, not that I want to change your motion, but maybe, um, that happens to be on the, on, there'll be the Canalween thing happening. So maybe take it even further forward so that it doesn't expire on the very day of that. Just, you want, yeah, to me, it can go as long as we want because we can always take it back if there's a problem.
Yeah, I think we had, um, made it month by month to see if there was gonna be any issues and there hasn't really been any major issues, a few complaints. So I'll, I'll amend, I'll amend the motion till the end of 2020.
Second.
All right, friendly amendment is accepted, so, um, motion on the floor right now is to extend these waivers through the end of 2020. Uh, any questions, comments from council on the amended motion?
I do have a question, I think, for Wes. Um, we're probably gonna start having questions about space heaters under the plastic tents and I just wasn't sure if we wanted to look into whether that's safe, whether that's a code violation. I just want to try to get ahead of what folks are gonna try to do to extend the season outdoors.
Uh, I've already gotten, uh, some questions regarding space heaters and I have encouraged the restaurants I've spoke to, um, to keep in touch with me. But right now, it's, it's a little hard to make a decision because I don't know what the ruling will be on sidewalks. And in my mind, sidewalks and heaters really go together. Though I have had other discussions with building code officials regarding, uh, space heaters and tents. It's something I am, it's on my mind and I'm working on it, but I can't give anything definitive tonight.
Great, just so it's on the radar. Thank you, Wes.
All right, any, uh, other questions, concerns from council? All right, I don't see any. So questions, concerns from the public, Dr. Perlmutter, or I see your hand.
Yes, I certainly appreciate that the restaurants need to have outdoor dining, but the sidewalk in front of the vault is really problematic. You cannot walk on that sidewalk. The tables are in the middle of the street. I've seen people with strollers have to either cross the street or go into the street. There's also this huge construction barrels there. And even though, um, he tries to push them back, every single night, they're literally in the center of the sidewalk and that's a public sidewalk. He has the tent in the back. Or maybe just the one that's sort of in front, but the umbrellas come all the way out and it's really an obstacle course to get around. It's, um, has to be a public safety hazard. I can't believe that that would not be considered a public safety hazard. So, um, I know I can't get past it. I have to cross the street. And, um, especially now with those construction barrels that are there. And here you're voting to make it a couple more months. It's just like inviting an issue to happen. I, I think somehow, you know, the others are in parking lots and don't seem to be as much of a problem, but that one really is, uh, I think hazardous and, and could end up, you know, causing a problem.
Thank you, Dr. Perlmutter. Um, you know, I know that we've had conversations with the vault. When this first started about the spacing on the sidewalk, Wes, I see you're still on the call, so maybe we can just revisit sort of what our original, original agreement, was there and just make sure that we are, um, maintaining enough space between where the tables are ending and, uh, you know, making sure there's enough sidewalk there for folks to still get by.
I just want to say, I think, I think that these, you know, I'm very thankful that we have businesses that have invested in Yardley and that they are doing their best to keep going and, uh, and that the public is doing their best to support them. So I think to give them a little extra time, you know, instead of having to kind of live month by month, knowing that the intention is to keep doing this, let them plan their finances, it's really important. Individual issues like what, uh, Ms. Perlmutter is bringing up, you know, those are relevant, but those are like sort of, you know, business by business. We just need to sort those out and I think it's good brought to our attention and which, you know, to me, that doesn't affect the decision to keep doing this. Uh, it's more just a matter of managing those individual issues as well as the heaters. Those are just details we'll have to work out, but the overarching thing here is that, we need to make, do whatever, what we can just to keep these businesses in business.
Thank you. Uh, if any other comments or questions on this motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries six to zero. Uh, and unless there are any other items of business tonight, we will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, person has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.